It's time to come to order for the City Council meeting of October 13th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call roll?
Jerry DeTulio.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
Genevieve Wooden.
Present.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Are there any changes to the minutes of September 22nd? Any changes or additions?
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
This is actually a revision to the change that we made in the approval of the minutes of September 8th. And we're almost there. Actually, the motion was made by Councilmember DeTulio and seconded by Councilmember Starker in the reverse order that is listed on these minutes.
For that amendment?
For that amendment.
Okay, I'll change it again.
Thank you so much.
May I now have a motion to approve the minutes as changed, as amended?
Motion to approve.
Second please.
Second.
All in favor?
Madam Mayor, we have one more change.
Oh, I'm sorry, one more?
It states Denver Water on the comments that should be consolidated mutual.
What was talked about during that whole thing was that it was Denver Water.
Well, Mr., I believe Mr. Johnson mentioned Denver Water, then we changed it to consolidated mutual, correct?
Yes, I understand it to be consolidated mutual.
So we should say consolidated mutual.
Okay.
Besides the changes that Mr. Starker has made.
All right.
Okay, the clerk is, you're agreeing to make that change?
Yeah. That's not what was said, but I'll change it.
We have a motion to approve the minutes as changed, as amended, excuse me, and a second, so now let's have a vote on that, please.
Who's the motion and the second? Let's get it right now.
You needed, who was the second on that motion?
Pardon me?
Mr. Fitzgerald was the second.
Who made the motion?
Ms. Davis.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. The minutes then are approved as changed. Please turn off your cell phones if there are any available or silence your cell phones so that we don't have any interesting rings during the ceremony. The ceremony. And now I'm going to move to proclamations and ceremonies, which we have tonight. I would like a representative of the Police Department, we have Dan Brennan here, I would also like the Wheat Ridge Fire Department, the Arvada Fire Department, Rural Metro, Pride Mark Ambulance, and Michaela. Michaela Brown. Hi, Michaela.
Hi.
I'd like to read this, why these folks are all here with us tonight. On May the 2nd, 2014, John Romero, oh, I'm sorry, on May the 2nd, 2014, at approximately 8:45 PM, there was a fatal traffic collision at the intersection of 32nd Avenue and Kipling Street. Jordan Sprouse, an 18-year-old young man, was driving eastbound on 32nd Avenue, crossing Kipling Street, when his vehicle was struck by another vehicle. The other vehicle ran the red traffic signal on Kipling Street. The driver of the other vehicle was determined to be intoxicated and driving in a reckless manner at high speeds. Michaela Brown, a 17-year-old student in training to become a firefighter, witnessed the collision. She immediately checked for injuries and began rendering first aid to Jordan. Wheat Ridge Police Officer Tyson Shaw arrived on scene and observed that Michaela had covered Jordan with a Fire Department-style bunker jacket. She told Officer Shaw that she thought that Jordan was not breathing and in shock. Immediately, Michaela and Officer Shaw began performing CPR. Unfortunately, Jordan's injuries were too severe, and he later died at the hospital. Not very often do we see young people such as Michaela respond and take immediate action as Michaela did during this traffic situation. On behalf of the City of Wheat Ridge, Wheat Ridge Fire Department, Arvada Fire Department, and the Rural Metro Pride Mark Ambulance Company, it is my honor and privilege to present this plaque to you. Pick it up. I want to read what the plaque says. Presented to Michaela Brown in recognition and appreciation of your quick response, extreme initiative, and willingness to assist using your emergency medical abilities and efforts in a brave attempt to save a life.
I didn't know I was speaking, so. I want to thank everyone that has supported me today and for this award. I am so, so very honored to receive this recognition. You know, I don't think I deserve recognition because, you know, as a firefighter, that is your duty to act, and sometimes you don't get recognized, so this is definitely a privilege. So, I definitely want to thank my parents because having a daughter in the fire service isn't the easiest thing in the world. But, thank you all once again, new faces and new ones, and all of these faces that I just love you all, so thank you so much.
So, Council and Mayor, you know, our citizen awards that the Police Department gives out are really, we think, a unique opportunity to describe to the public what, you know, our average citizens do when they're confronted with, you know, a difficult situation or adversity. And in this particular situation, it was a very tragic and traumatic accident. It closed down both Kipling and 32nd Avenue for many, many hours, an extensive manhunt for the driver of that vehicle. He was successfully arrested several hours later. But it also points, I think, to the unique and collaborative relationship that our department shares with the Arvada Fire Department, the Wheat Ridge Fire Department, and the men and women of Rural Pride Mark Emergency Medical Services. You know, without our ability to collaborate and cooperate and work together, you know, situations like this and many, many other situations would not be resolved in as efficient or as effective or as a timely matter as they were. So, my hat goes off not only to Michaela, but also to the men and women of those other organizations, and the everyday citizen that steps up and helps out public safety when
Let's move on now to, well, this would be citizens' right to speak. These are items, on any manner, not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes and sign the public comment roster, and I think we're going to start tonight. Before we do citizens, we're going to do our usual, we have a speaker from one of the schools, usually a principal. Genevieve, do you want to announce who that is?
Yes, we have an education committee in the City of Wheat Ridge, and we've identified 17 schools that serve Wheat Ridge residents. We have invited each of those principals to City Council to give us a little introduction and some information about their school. Tonight, I'd like to introduce Sherri Carter from Vivian Elementary.
Thank you for allowing me to come and visit with you. Vivian Elementary is a school that's on 25th and Miller, so if you look at us, we really are in the city of Lakewood, but because we're in the Wheat Ridge articulation area, we get to be a part of all of the great partnering you're doing with Jeffco Schools, and I really appreciate that. Vivian Elementary is a small school. It almost, you don't find them as small as we are. I think we're like the second smallest school in Jeffco. We have 185 students at our school. We have one teacher for kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth. The kids kind of become almost siblings because they go from one grade to the next, all the way through sixth grade. We also have five different special education labs. We have seven buses that children are bused from all over Jeffco into our school. We have the deaf and hard-of-hearing lab that has signing as a part of it. We have a primary and intermediate for that. We also have the deaf and hard-of-hearing for kids who have multiple other needs. They may be hearing, but their main language is signing, and so we have those kids. We also have two labs, a primary and intermediate lab for kids with social-emotional needs. And we really believe at Vivian to embrace the whole child. We do a lot of affective lessons for our kids. We teach our kids a lot of the social things that they need to know, and it's always my privilege to be there. It's a pretty magical place. We do a musical and sign in the springtime, and I'd love to have any of you come and just visit sometime. Truly is a magical place, and thanks for letting me brag about my school even though I'm not a Wheat Ridge person, so, thank you.
Thank you for giving us some information on Vivian. Very interesting. Now, I am going to move to citizens who wish to speak. These are items not on the tonight's agenda. Do I have anybody there to speak? Sir, come on forward. Give us your name and address. Spell your last name for us.
My name's Randy Ketelson, K-E-T-E-L-S-E-N. I own Ketelson Campers of Colorado, 9870 West I-70 Service Road South in Wheat Ridge. And thank you for letting me come and speak in this open forum. We have been an employer in the City of Wheat Ridge at Ketelson Campers for nearly 30 years now. We have been rated one of the top five RV dealers in North America by our association. We employ 70 people full-time at Ketelson Campers. We have had a very reoccurring problem, and that's why I'm here tonight. I need your help. I need your help desperately. At Ketelson Campers, we have been plagued by constant break-ins, consistent, constant break-ins. We have had excellent support from the Wheat Ridge Police Department. They're doing everything they can do with extra patrols. If you're familiar with our property, we're on 13 acres, and so we have a large perimeter to cover that is accessed from many different obscure ways. And it's possible that the police who, we gladly give them access to our fenced property, that they can be at one end of 13 acres and bad things can be happening at the other end unbeknownst to them. Our losses in the way of break-ins have mounted to the level of over $100,000 in losses, in flat-screen TVs, stereo systems, actually pulling the copper wiring out of trailers to sell it on the black market, and it's continued and continued. We have many customers who leave their units for service for us to perform, and people whose dreams are shattered when they trust us. They bring their camper in after a nice camping trip to get it winterized or whatever, and we call them the next day and we have to tell them, "Your unit's been vandalized, broken into, and all of your personal property has been stolen." Their feeling about Ketelson Campers is obvious, and their perception of the City of Wheat Ridge is really obvious. We've got to stop this cancer where it is because crime begets crime. And just because I'm getting broken into tens of thousands of dollars every occurrence doesn't mean that each and every one of you won't be next. We've got to get, we've got to get these people out of town. We've got to make it go away. We have found a reliable perimeter security system that we've had two applications in with the city for consideration and approval, and we would like to have you all further learn about what we're trying to do to protect ourselves and continue business here in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
I'm Michael Pate. I'm with the Electric Guard Dog out of Columbia, South Carolina, and I'm the man that has been hired, tried to be hired, to protect Ketelson Campers. What we do is we protect large, open areas with an electric security fence. We take a 12-volt battery and an energizer or a capacitor, take that 12 volts, amplify it to 7,000 volts. Takes about a second and a half to do that. Once I get it down, I zip it down the fence line to deter any crime and to measure the voltage coming back as an alarm, so I can do a perimeter check of the 13 acres at Ketelson Campers in 1.5 seconds. I stop crying cold everywhere I go. I've got a nice portfolio of customers, FedEx, UPS, hopefully Ketelson Campers, every major trucking firm in America, every major metal recycler in America, every major car recycler in America, we guard their properties. We've been working with the city staff now for almost six months, trying to get an installation into Ketelson Campers, and we've been getting a lot of pushback from not only the city staff, but the Chief of Police, as well as the school district. Unfortunately, Randy is right next door to a local school. Almost all of the theft, the breaches, come from that area. So people go in the school, hide on the grounds, break into Randy's place and steal him blind. There's also an itinerant hotel on the other side of the property that is also another problem. So what we've done is we've made an application to the city. We're usually trying to get 10 feet tall. We've acquiesced to nine. We've acquiesced to set the fence off the property line at the school, five feet on top of the berm that he's got over there. And basically, the decision from the city's been aggregated to the school district, and the school district does not want it there. So Randy is at risk, and he will continue to be at risk until, in my mind, he has issued a permit to be able to protect his property. And I think the only reason, only way that can happen is if the City Council basically directs the city staff to do their job, and that's what I'm asking you to do tonight. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Mayor, we'd like to have staff address those comments, please.
Yeah, I'm thinking this is a study session kind of thing, or as you said, staff can address it, and if necessary.
Right now, we'd like to address it.
Right now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. We have been working with the applicant and the property owner on their fence application. As he noted, the fence was initially 10 feet in height and was set back basically directly adjacent to an existing fence, and, you know, we've been working through the potential for public safety concerns with the ability of someone to pass their arm or hand through that fence and receive that shock, and what the health issues and safety exposures were for that potential risk. We had recommended initially that that be set back a greater distance, three feet, so kind of beyond arm's length, and also that it be reduced in height to nine feet. And that nine-feet requirement is important because we're only authorized at an administrative level to grant variances up to 50%. So the standard fence requirement is six feet. We can authorize up to nine feet through an administrative variance process. So the applicant had been initially unwilling to meet those fence height and setback restrictions, but ultimately they were willing to do that. Excuse me. A particular concern was the proximity to the school. We did, as part of the standard referral process for an adjacent property owner, refer the application and the technical details of the type of technology and the type of electricity that would be conducted through that system to the school district, and the school district raised significant health and safety concerns for their student population. Based on that, there's a provision in the code that allows the Public Works Director and the Chief of Police to make a determination that a fence is unsafe, and unsafe fences are specifically prohibited in the city. Based on the significant concerns from the school district and the safety of their students, and the perceived safety of their students as well, we felt that we made that determination that the fence was unsafe. The applicant has most recently amended their application to propose to potentially modify it in additional ways, which for the security of the application, I won't disclose because I think they want that to be not disclosed, but that may address some of our safety concerns. It's currently on referral, and we have not yet received a second round of comments from the school district, so we're not at liberty to say whether or not the school district has made a determination that they believe the modified application would be determined to be safe, but we await that response before, in our minds, we can take any legitimate action on the application.
So staff is active?
It's an active application that's on referral.
Right. Was there another comment?
Just briefly, you know, the Police Department, I think, has had a very long and collaborative relationship with Mr. Ketelson, and certainly we understand his concerns, but what occurs at his particular lot occurs at other camping camper lots along the I-70 corridor. It's just not, not only systemic to his lot, but actually is a metro-wide problem in terms of break-ins to those campers because they're all on large lots. I have had an opportunity to speak to this individual from Guard Dog. I thought it was a very collaborative discussion. I would not describe that discussion at all as being hindering to him putting in this device, but certainly in regards to the safety concerns and the outreach that the members of the Police Department felt that he needed to make to the school district, that's what he was referred to do, and we're currently reevaluating that application. So it's unfortunate that he chose to make comments about my Police Department and the manner in which we're responding to this, but I want you to know from my perspective, we have a very strong relationship with Ketelson Campers and our other businesses, and we take crime in this city very seriously. take crime in this city very seriously.
May I respond to that, please?
No, this is not a public debate. We're aware.
I think it was allowed to graduate to a public debate with the response.
Mayor, point of order, we're in public comment, three minutes for each person.
Right. I'm sorry, sir.
No problem.
I appreciate you, and you may take your seat.
Counsel, we'll keep you updated on the process of the application.
I'm sure staff will keep us updated. Right. Okay, do we have any other public comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda? Thank you. Okay, now, there are several citi-, oh, here we have another person. Okay.
So my perspective was marijuana issue is not on the agenda tonight.
That's, well, marijuana.
Because it's a first reading only.
It's only on first, it's first reading tonight, and we don't take public comment on first reading. It's reserved for second reading, which will be in two weeks.
So if I can just make a public comment about items that are on the agenda.
Not on items that are not on the, items that are not on the agenda.
You can talk in general about any topic that you wish, but if it's specifically about a moratorium, that would be on, that would be on the agenda, so you can't talk about that.
But I can talk about, if it's not about the moratorium.
Right.
Yes.
I know it's a gray area, you know, that's why I'm asking. And I did ask before the meeting because I knew that was on there. So it is about marijuana, but it's not about the moratorium specifically.
Looks, the attorney is giving me his nod. Play ball.
Okay, all right. So I wanted to address the property specifically at Thirty-.
Yeah, we need your name and address.
Jennifer Yates. I'm at Thirty-Six Hundred Miller Street. So I want to speak specifically to the property at Thirty-Eighth and Miller because there's been a lot of talk about it. And so what I have found is that there was a pre-application conference request for the property at Thirty-Eighth and Miller. It was submitted on May twenty-eighth. I also have a pre-application meeting summary for the meeting that took place on June fifth between the Community Development Department and potential buyers of that property. I believe it's true there's no official application. However, the applicant stated in his meeting request, "Please recognize that we are serious about this project and intend to expedite every phase of its development." Further notes from the meeting summary said, "The applicant's inquiry about the licensing process for marijuana-related business. They are seeking to submit a business license application prior to completion of redevelopment to ensure the property does not become ineligible before construction is complete. I've been told many times by counsel and staff that there is no business license application for the property. However, the pre-applicant must have been serious because they did proceed to purchase the property on August fifth and start a removal of the underground gas tanks. Only after the moratorium on August eighteenth has the visible work stopped." So again, I just wanted to state that because there's been all kinds of things, so if any of that is not true, please feel free to let me know. Further with that, there was speak of the special use permit in there, and I know that we can make adjustments to that, but there are a lot of holes in that special use permit. The first one is the applicant, not the city, but the applicant must notify our property owners within six hundred feet. For Thirty-Eighth and Miller, that would be about thirty homes. Notification may be made by mail or hand delivery. Absolutely no accountability there. The Community Development Department will then notify those residents within three hundred feet of the property, which, for again, my estimation of that property is about eighteen homes. We are not notifying a good part of the neighborhood that would be affected by anything at that corner. Also, the Community Development Department will supply the applicant with a list of all property owners within that six hundred-foot radius. I received a copy of a marijuana license application that was redacted. It took three days to get it. All the addresses and percent of ownership were redacted off of that document. However, the city will give an applicant my and my neighbors' addresses. Just does not seem correct. So I'm hoping we can have further discussion next week's study session.
Your time is up.
Okay.
She's got quite an alarm going off here.
Just eight more seconds.
Your time is up.
All right. There's also Jefferson County Marijuana Task Force that I hope will be brought up in this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could address a couple of comments, too. This is such an important topic.
Okay.
Ms. Yates, comments are correct. The city does provide free pre-application meetings for all developments in the city. It's a courtesy, so potential developers and property owners have the information they need to make a decision to move forward on a property. They did meet with staff on this property. The property was zoned correctly at the time, and that was the information we shared with the applicant. There's also rumors going around that, that I made comments at the groundbreaking on Friday for Sprouts Development that, that I confirmed that there is an application in for the site that is hundred percent false. There's no application in for this project. So please, people listening, there's no application in for the Thirty-Eighth and Miller site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goff. Another person with a comment that's not on tonight's agenda.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Mary Fegy, and last name is spelled F as in Frankie, D, J, E, and I live at Three Four Six Five Estes Street. And what I'd like to speak on tonight is the marijuana issue. And I came to last month's meeting in regard to both sides of the issue being able to speak, and I just want to answer some of the things that were said at that meeting. And, you know, they discussed how veterans and cancer patients and what have you have used marijuana. You know, I think everyone has been affected by cancer in their families. I know for a fact mine has. My brother had cancer, and he went through the chemo and the radiation and all that jazz, and he used marijuana to help him with his treatments. And at the same time, he didn't make it. He died. But, you know, that's beside the point. He asked his wife before he died, he said, "Please, make sure that our three young sons do not ever know that I smoke marijuana," because they know, he knew the dangers of this drug. But at the same time, I also realize the benefits of it. A lot of people need it for their medical needs. I have no problem with that. My problem is with the retail aspect of this industry and the way it's being marketed to our children. And, you know, and we also heard from Sandra Bedore, who owns one of the marijuana shops here in Wheat Ridge. And she let us know that she has brought twenty-three jobs into the city of Wheat Ridge. Well, let's face it, Sandra Bedore is a drug dealer. Albeit legalized, she is a drug dealer. And she has basically hired twenty-three pushers to work the streets of Wheat Ridge. Twenty-three pushers on our city. And, you know, I thought, you know, I need to get a little more educated on this. So I started going to the Wheat Ridge Rec Center, and that's where Parents for Healthy Colorado has been holding their meetings. And I understand city council here has been invited to those meetings, and only one of you cared enough to show up. But you know who did show up was Michael Elliott. And I don't know if you're familiar with who Michael Elliott is, but Michael Elliott is in charge of promoting the marijuana industry. And I asked Michael, I said, "Michael," I said, "You know, I keep reading in the paper about these children that are overdosing on these MIPS, and basically what that means is marijuana-infused products, basically the candy, the cookies, and what have you." And he says, "Well," and I'm like, "No, Michael, I need a yes or a no on this one." And he goes, "Well, yes, but that's just the problem that we have right now." And I said, "Oh, so now our children are a problem? They are a liability?"
You have twenty seconds.
They are basically something that we can, that are expendable. You know something? This industry is a tiger, and if we don't take care of it right now, that tiger is going to get out of control. We need to put that tiger in a cage and do it now before it is too late, and this city has that opportunity. I certainly hope you take it. Thank you.
Thank you. We have one more speaker.
Well, my name's John Clark. I live at Forty-Six Sixty-Five Swadley, and I know that you think I'm going to speak to you about marijuana, but I'm not. First of all, I just put two minutes together with two questions, but it was kind of weird when I showed up that Sherri Carter was here and Electric Guard Dog was here. So I'm going to take that first minute and just explain that Sherri Carter has a closer Wheat Ridge connection than, than just feeding into Wheat Ridge High School. She used to be a kindergarten teacher over at, over at my kid's school, and she taught my oldest in kinder, and I'm telling you, she is a great educator, so anything you can do to help her out over there, that'd be great. Second thing is the Electric Guard Dog. I had no idea that they were going to be here. I just want to put it out there. They've been securing my yard in Adams County at Seventy-Second Pecos for over ten years. That's, that's the company that we have. If anybody here wants to see that product, wants to see it in action, and wants to know how it works, I'm not trying to step on anybody's toes, but you're more than welcome. You know how to get ahold of me. You can come out to my shop, and I'll show you exactly what it is. So, that being said, I just have a couple of questions about the two-A ballot proposal, and I see that there's no formal group or organization spending any money to try to convince voters to vote no on two-A. No yard signs, no mailers, no flyers, no nothing. So my question is who and why? So the other day, I came home down the, down the street to find the canvassers going down my block, dropping flyers for the yes-on-two crowd, or yes-on-two-A crowd. I didn't recognize anybody as council members volunteering, so I just kind of assumed that they were paid canvassers. And I'm also seeing plenty of yard signs around town, including some in public spaces, which I think is a no-no, but that's okay. Reached in the mailbox at the end of last week and found a very expensive mailer for the yes-crowd with a couple of council members smiling faces on it. And I do happen to know how expensive a nice multicolor heavy-stock mailer is to send out to all the voters. So what's next? A full-page ad in one of the local newspapers? So back to my questions. Who? Who's spending this kind of money, and what are we going to owe them if two-A passes? Is it Wheat Ridge 2020? Is it the marijuana industry? Is it the big developers? Who is it, and what do they want out of our forty million dollars? And why? Why are these groups spending so many thousands and thousands of dollars when there is no organized group trying to defeat two-A? No signs, no fancy mailers, no ads, no nothing. Just seems odd that a group would have to work so hard and spend so much money trying to convince people that something is good, and yet, no one needs to remind them of what they already know. Thank you.
Thank you. I love that.
Hi, my name is Leah Dozeman, D-O-Z-E-M-A-N. I live at Forty-Three Sixty-Four Hoyt Street. Good evening, mayor, council members, staff, and audience. My name is Leah Dozeman, and I have lived in Wheat Ridge my entire life. My parents own two homes in Wheat Ridge, one off Thirty-Eighth and Harlan and one off Forty-Fourth and Hoyt, which is my childhood home that my fiance and I recently boomed back into to raise a family of our own. My family and I, along with many of our neighbors, including numerous business owners, are asking you to vote no on Wheat Ridge ballot question two-B. There are many concerns regarding the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor Plan and moving forward with narrowing Thirty-Eighth as determined by two-B. One of the biggest concerns is that two-B and the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor Plan come with an estimated cost of nine-point-three million dollars for only an eight-block stretch as outlined by the City of Wheat Ridge Thirty-Eighth Avenue Streetscape Concept Design presented in a city council session on June sixteenth, two thousand fourteen. Last Wednesday during the Wheat Ridge United Neighborhoods Election Forum, a proponent of two-B stated that "The Thirty-Eighth Avenue Main Street Plan has been crafted and supported by literally hundreds and hundreds of community stakeholders through a deliberate, open, predictable, and participatory process that has taken ten years." The speaker goes on to say that "The Thirty-Eighth Avenue Main Street Plan was developed under the leadership of six seated city councils and two mayors." So my question to the crafters and policymakers of this project is, with ten years of planning, why were funding options never discussed? Or better yet, why wasn't any money set aside for the project? In fact, funding options are completely absent from the Thirty-Eighth Avenue Corridor Plan. How can the voters be asked to move forward with the project without knowing how to pay for it or knowing the exact cost? Proponents of two-B also claim that public input was sought after throughout the entire process. However, there are many longtime residents and business owners that have been politically involved for years, and in some cases decades, that feel they have been ignored and pushed aside, which I don't feel should be overlooked. Proponents of two-B assert that it will create a half-mile of ADA-compliant sidewalks and curbs, which will serve the forty percent of our community who doesn't drive due to age, ability, or financial means. But what about the non-compliant ADA sidewalks throughout the rest of the city? That forty percent of our community does not live along the eight-block area being revitalized on Thirty-Eighth. Have you walked Thirty-Eighth from Youngfield to Kipling? There are absolutely no sidewalks in the area, but the issue is not being addressed. While we are being asked to somehow fund a nine-point-three-million-dollar project for only a half a mile, the rest of the city suffers. Denver proposed a ten-million, ten-million dollars to make all their sidewalks across the entire city ADA-compliant. Imagine how far nine-point-three million could go to revitalization efforts all over Wheat Ridge.
You have twenty seconds.
I believe there are many other options that can be pursued to move forward with a Main Street, options that could focus on the entirety of Thirty-Eighth for a fraction of the cost. Please join my family and me in voting no on two-B. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker.
Mayor, members of city council, staff, and residents, my name is Vicki Odison. I live at Forty-Two Ten Brentwood Street. I moved to Wheat Ridge in two thousand and five. I've never aspired to become a community activist, much less in the world of social media. If I let loose with a string of four-letter words, please feel free to censor my remarks. And my hat is off to all of you for being elected officials and city employees in this environment. I don't come to this issue lightly. I have nine years of experience in the leadership industry. I've served on the Board of the National Association for Community Leadership. I'm a graduate of the Center for Creative Leadership in the Colorado Leadership Forum, and I'm on the Board of the Wheat Ridge Community Foundation. I have nine years' experience working with small businesses. Eighty-five percent of my one-thousand-plus clients were small businesses with a ninety-plus percent retention rate. I'm a member of Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge, and I'm speaking tonight on behalf of the small businesses, property owners, and residents on Thirty-Eighth Avenue in the eight-block area directly affected by ballot issue two-B because I believe their voices were inadvertently or otherwise excluded from the planning process. I have copies of our position statement. Monica will give them to you. Here's the shortened version. Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge wants change for residents that live throughout the city and for businesses on all key commercial corridors. We want more dining, retail, and consumer options in our local economy. We want a bike, pedestrian, and auto-friendly city. We want all stakeholders to have a say in how our city develops. Thank you for your support of and your work on the Corridor Plan and for voting unanimously to allow ballot issue two-B to go to a vote of all the residents of Wheat Ridge. We respectfully hope that two-B is defeated so we can come together to foster a less-expensive and more-inclusive plan, and per my Facebook posts and one that maybe includes a water feature for children. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Monica Duran. I live at Twenty-Nine Eighty Uppam Street. Good evening, mayor and city council. I am also on the Board of the Wheat Ridge Fire Department and a member of the Jefferson Center for Mental Health and the Latino Initiative, and am very involved in the community. We have a few rules of engagement that we ask you to please respect and listen to here regarding the Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge. We feel every voice at the table has a right to be heard. Every voice at the table has an obligation to convey opinions and information in a thoughtful and respectful manner in order to keep the conversation moving in a positive direction. The founding and current members of Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge feel their voices have been missing from the current planning process from the beginning, and they were powerless to change or influence the plan that resulted in the ballot issue two-B. Even now, when Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge members express an objection to an aspect of the Corridor Plan such as look, fill, safety, expense, or width, we are questioned. We are questioned. What's not to like about this? Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge think ballot issue two-B should be defeated so that our concerns can be addressed in a more inclusive manner. Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge believes whatever plan is adopted should have more support and be less contentious for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Rachel Holtein, and I live at Forty-Six Ninety Balsam Street. I'm a District Two resident. I'm here tonight to speak in Um, I'm here tonight to speak in support of two B. I have been involved in community initiatives a lot in my lifetime, but just through my ballot. And this is the first time I've ever felt inspired and compelled enough to really throw my full energy into helping my whole community realize the efforts that Wheat Ridge has undergone over ten years. Um, as we've already heard tonight from, uh, Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge, um, they want change. And that's exactly why I'm supporting two B. The Thirty-Eighth Avenue Main Street Corridor Plan is about positive change. Change that's been guided by two mayors and six seated city councils. Um, I believe yes on two B makes those changes permanent in a way that our whole community can benefit. Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge also wants more dining and retail in our local economy. And I think we've all seen in the last two years, since the temporary, um, road reconfiguration has been put in place, we've seen several new dining and retail businesses such as Rite Coast Pizza, Colorado Plus, The Office, Christiano's Gelato, and others. Yes on two B will attract more dining and retail to our community to join the emerging, thriving businesses already there. Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge wants a bike, pedestrian, and auto-friendly city. The Thirty-Eighth Avenue Main Street Plan creates a pedestrian-friendly corridor for our whole community enjoy, including the forty percent of us who don't drive due to age, ability, or financial means. And then Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge wants all stakeholders to have a say in how our city develops. And I think it's hard to not recognize the extraordinary efforts that the city has gone to over ten years to include all stakeholders. And in my, um, statements at the forum about two B, I was more specific about what those efforts were, but to make it clear, one thousand points of stakeholder engagement. So I think what we have in front of us is a plan that has been vetted by a thorough, engaging, and predictable public process. It by no means reflects the input of everyone who's been involved, but it absolutely reflects the thoughts that have been shared by our neighbors, business owners, and property owners. It's also been vetted by planning professionals and city council and others that, who, who have long-term interest in our community. So whatever other people think might be good, it's armchair planning, it's not been vetted properly. And a no on two B means nothing happens. And if nothing happens, nobody wins. Please vote yes on two B. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Eric Wilson. I live at thirty-seven forty-three J Street. I'm also here speaking, um, in favor of ballot issue two B. And just like Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge, I want change. I want improvements to key commercial corridors that will be supportive for the residents and businesses that live and work throughout the city, and not just on eight blocks of one street. But we have to start somewhere, and we've been planning, you know, this revitalization of, of Main Street on Thirty-Eighth Avenue for ten years. So let's get it done. Citizens for an Inclusive Wheat Ridge wants more dining and retail in our local economy, so do I. They want more, they want development that supports existing businesses as well as increases consumer options throughout the city? So do I. And I think two B is our best way of, um, of really solidifying our support for local businesses here in Wheat Ridge. They want a bike, pedestrian, and auto-friendly city? So do I. They want all stakeholders to have a say in how our city develops. We want, they want to bring together representatives of any and all businesses, neighbors, coworkers, youth, elders, and city leaders to create a plan for growth that enjoys the full support and embrace of the community. Well, I, I want that too, and as Rachel was describing, this is exactly what's happened in the past ten years, um, with, um, lots and lots of meetings and, um, over one thousand points of public input. So, we've already had the process. Now let's take the step to go forward with it and, um, make our city better. Thanks.
Thank you. Another speaker.
My name is Becky Grant, and I live at thirty-nine forty-eight Lee Circle in Wheat Ridge. I am the grandmother of four precious grandchildren, two of whom live in Wheat Ridge. A lot of what I've heard about marijuana over the last several weeks and months is that it's not harmful, it's perfectly safe, and in circumcirt, certain circumstances may even be beneficial. It's not my desire to deny treatment to any individual who actually needs it, or until the state law is changed, anyone who just wants it. However, one of my main concerns is that marijuana has not been studied long enough to determine its long-term effects, both mental and physical. Tobacco has been in use for several hundred years. As you can see by these print cigarette ads from the fifties and the sixties, the safety and recreational benefits of cigarettes were also being touted. These two say, "More doctors smoke Camels than any other cigarettes." This one says, "No throat irritation." I guess throat cancer's not an irritation. Santa recommends Pelmels. My dentist recommends Viceroy's. Mickey Mantle smokes Camels. This cute little baby says that my dad gets only the best Marlboros. By the way, the Marlboro man died of cancer caused by cigarettes. This one says, "Two thousand six hundred and seventy-nine physicians recommend Luckys." This one says, "Science has discovered that Chesterfields are the best." Less than ten years after these ads appeared, the Public Health Smoking Act of nineteen sixty-nine required that all cigarette packages contain the following warning. "The Surgeon General has determined that cigarette smoking is dangerous to your health." I didn't get a twenty-second warning?
No, you got fifteen.
You got, yeah, fifteen.
We are all aware of the negative impact cigarette smoking has had on our healthcare system, our economy, and most importantly, hundreds of thousands of families. I shudder to think what we will be finding out in the next decade or so about the impact of habitual marijuana use. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? I see another one. Yeah, if there's some other speakers, could you be at the podium at, closer to the end of this, of the present speaker? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Veronica Mcdona, and I live in one-two-two-one Wells Thirty-Eighth Avenue.
I'm gonna ask you to spell your last name.
Yes, M-C-D-O-N-O-U-G-H.
Thank you.
And I apologize by my, for my accent in advance. Uh, I, if I understood clearly tonight, I cannot talk about the moratorium of marijuana.
Right.
Which I won't, but I just wanted to point out of something that is ironic, that is obvious. We start today, this meeting, with everybody standing and giving an ovation to Michaela for saving someone's life. Someone life that was taken away by someone who was intoxicated while driving. According to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, fifteen percent of trauma patients injured while driving have been smoking marijuana. Another seventeen have consumed both alcohol or marijuana. My question tonight, is it even worth it? Is even worth it, no matter how much money and how much of, uh, marijuana is a widely accepted drug to put our society in risk? Thirty-two percent people in the hospital by accident has been under the influence of marijuana. That's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I don't see anybody else approaching.
My name's Patricia Lozari. I live at forty-one seventy-five Garland Street, off of Forty-Fourth.
Spell your last name again.
I'm sorry, what?
Spell your last name, please. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I wasn't sure I would have time to do this, and I know we only have three minutes, but, um, I have a lot to say about use of marijuana in general, not, not towards what's agenda is or the moratorium or anything, but, um, I've lived here for twenty-two years, which is probably nothing compared to many other citizens in Wheat Ridge. But I actually grew up and came from the San Francisco Bay Area. I am fifty-five years old, and if anyone can mathematically figure that out, I grew up during the sixties. I lived near Hate Ashbury. I lived a little, a town nearby. I had a stepsister and a stepbrother who constantly brought me there because my parents worked very hard. They were very hard-working citizens. And back then, it was assumed a safer place for children to dwell and be without the worries of your mom or dad having to be there or some other special guardian. My brothers and sisters were teenagers, pretty much. At Hate Ashbury, I'm just going back because these are personal experiences. As a child, I just thought these were a bunch of happy people and they're having, you know, really friendly. But I also remember as a child, um, that in the area that this was happening, as people became more relaxed, I was alone. I was able to wander all over Golden Gate Park. I had no fear of strangers because it wasn't a worry back then. I was just a child. Today, the marijuana that is being produced is four to five times stronger than that which I was exposed to as a child. I hope that people will do the research and look at the data proving that it is not safe, and especially for children. They try to blame parents that will be negligible when using this. Well, I have other experiences I can share, which I don't really have a lot of time, and I will try to tell you. The fact is, it is still addictive. And when you're addictive, you're thinking rationally, uh, you're rationally, "Well, a little bit here won't hurt," or when the kids are asleep, "Hey, let's do this because they're asleep." Twice, in my experiences, and this was later than a child, someone, under the influence back then, when it wasn't as strong, just put down their joint on a pack of newspapers. It caught fire. Okay. Maybe that's negligence, but these weren't adults, these were teenagers. I was teenager. I did a lot of acting when I was younger. I did a lot of cast parties. And I saw a lot of people do strange things. Things that they can't be accountable for because their mentality is not in state. And I know my time is up, but please consider these, these facts as we approach the coming days.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak? Okay.
Madam Mayor, could you, um, have, all the people that spoke, did you sign on one of the green sheets? Put your name and address clearly on one of the green sheets so I can spell it properly in the minutes. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to the, um, approval of the agenda. Are there any changes to tonight's agenda? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move on. Once again, let me do, remind you that if you're here to discuss the moratorium that we'll be discussing under item number five, that will not be available for public comment, which is typical because it'll be first reading. It will be available for public comment on second reading. Let's move on to tonight's agenda with consent agenda. And, uh, Mr. DeTulio, you were gonna read that for us?
Thank you. I'd like to introduce the consent agenda. Item one A is Resolution fifty-three dash two thousand fourteen, amending the fiscal year two thousand fourteen Police Investigation Fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of eight thousand eight hundred dollars for the purpose of purchasing document software, document management software. Item one B is a motion to approve payment to E.S.R.I. Incorporated in the amount of thirty-eight thousand dollars for the annual license renewal for the graphic, graphical information system, G.I.S. Is a motion in order?
Yes, please.
I move to approve consent agenda items one A and one B.
May I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Starker. Any discussion? Please vote.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Let's move on to item number two, which is Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Council Bill number twelve dash two thousand fourteen in ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at forty-three sixty Gray Street from neighborhood commercial to mixed-use neighborhood. M.U.N., case number WZ dash fourteen dash seven slash Jeromano. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from neighborhood commercial to mixed-use neighborhood for a property located at forty-three sixty Gray Street. The proposed rezoning area includes one parcel, the total size of which is approximately point one-nine acres. The purpose of the zone change is to expand possible uses of the property, including the option of converting the existing structure back to residential occupancy. At this time, the applicant is not proposing any new development or modifications to the site if the property is redeveloped. In the future, under the proposed M.U.N. zoning, an administrative site plan review would be required to confirm that the proposed development meets the standards of the mixed-use zoning district.
This is an ordinance for second reading. Do I have an ordinance number?
You don't, I don't. I will get it later.
It's fine, just prove the council bill on second reading, we'll assign an ordinance number later.
Thank you. This is a public hearing, so I'm gonna open the public hearing and swear in all who might be testifying, either it be applicants or staff. Any applicants here? No? Just our staff? Yep, thank you very much. Standing and raising your right hand, do you swear to tell the whole truth as you understand it in this manner? Say I do. Thank you. We'll start with staff.
Madam Mayor, uh, this is a fairly straightforward application in our mind, so we don't have a presentation for you tonight. Um, the, the rezoning, really the, the simple effect as stated by Mr. Urban, is essentially to allow residential conversion of a structure which was originally built as a residence and, and is located in an area which is very much a mix of residential and commercial uses. So, uh, from a design perspective, uh, the current standards under, uh, the existing, uh, commercial zoning are very similar to the design standards that would be in place under the mixed-use neighborhood zoning. Uh, so staff is very supportive of the request in terms of, uh, the flexibility in, in being, in the future and being able to use it for a, a single-family residence.
Thank you. Are there any questions of staff? Does the applicant wish to make any statement or testify? Okay, thank you. All right, um, well, is there a motion then?
It's public hearing, so.
Oh, wait a minute, I need to.
Just in case, I know you swore.
I need to do that.
Everybody that wanted to, but you should ask anyhow.
All right, I should close the public hearing. We don't have any more testimony?
I would just ask if there's anyone in the audience that.
Is there any public comment on this particular item? On this address? Okay, then I will close the public hearing, and I need a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve Council Bill number twelve dash two thousand fourteen in ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at forty-three sixty Gray Street from neighborhood commercial to mixed-use neighborhood on second reading and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication for the following reasons. The city council has conducted a proper hearing, public hearing meeting, all public notice requirements as required by section twenty-six dash one oh nine of the Code of Laws. The required rezoning has been reviewed by the Planning Commission, which has forwarded its, forwarded its recommendation. The request of rezoning has been found to comply with the criteria for review in section twenty-six dash one-one-two dot E of the Code of Laws.
Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion? Please pose a console.
Motion carries eight-zero.
Item number three. Mr. Starker.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm pleased to introduce item number three. This is Council Bill number thirteen dash two thousand fourteen in ordinance adopting by reference the two thousand twelve additions of the International Building Code, the International Mechanical Code, the International Plumbing Code, the International Property Maintenance Code, the International Residential Code, the International Fire Code, and the International Fuel Gas Code, the two thousand fourteen addition of the National Electrical Code, and the two thousand fifteen National Fire Protection Association ninety-nine standard for healthcare facilities, adopting certain amendments to such code, providing penalties for violations of the same, and amending chapter five of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws accordingly. At issue in this, the currently has, uh, the city has currently adopted. At issue in this, the currently has, the city has currently adopted and enforces the following related code, 2013 International Property Maintenance Code, 2006 versions of the remaining international codes, the 2011 N.E.C. National Electrical Code, and 2005 National Fire Protection Association NFPA 99 Standards for Healthcare Facilities. To remain consistent with neighboring jurisdictions and in compliance with state regulations, staff is recommending that city council adopt the most recent version of the codes, which are the 2012 International Codes, the 2014 National Electrical Code, and the 2015 NFPA 99 Standards for Healthcare Facilities.
Is there any staff report on this?
There is.
Do we have that?
Good evening. I am John Schumacher, the chief building official. I'm here tonight to present to you this ordinance for second reading in the hopes of adopting the 2012 International Codes, 2014 Electrical Code, the 2015 NFPA 99 Standards for Healthcare Facilities, and some minor changes in language in Chapter 5 concerning signed fees. Excuse me. You also have before you an alternate motion with two amendments to the amendments that were presented during the first reading. One of those amendments is a change in language within the International Mechanical Code to impose dilution, filtering, and capturing requirements on all marijuana occupancies, both existing and new. The first reading, it was only on new occupancies. It did not include imposition on existing occupancies. The second language change that's proposed in those amendments is to permit non-combustible solvent extraction processes, and to clarify what was included in the first reading of the ordinance for marijuana occupancies and their classification as an H3, as opposed to prohibition of some solvent-based marijuana occupancies. Also included in the ordinance are some minor changes from our current codes, not only updating to the 2012 from the 2006 on some of the codes that were listed, but also updating the Property Maintenance Code from the 2003 to the 2012. That was not included in the previous process. Also, a return to permitting for exterior cladding such as siding and brick, reinstatement of mid-roofs and inspections, and then a series of changes that were requested by council as a part of the first reading, such as the inclusion of fines in the section allowing for appeals, a reduction of the required number of plan sets to be submitted with an application from three to two, a reduction of the occupant load in M. occupancies from 250 to 125 when determining separate sex bathrooms, and language that clarifies that the seven-foot above roof requirement for plumbing vents be only applicable to occupiable roofs, and also now prohibition of combustible solvent-based marijuana extraction in lieu of all solvent-based marijuana extraction. These codes are designed to ensure fire and life safety and usability of structures within the city, and the proposed amendments that you have before you are designed to ensure the application of the codes in a manner consistent with the goals of city council and as requested at the previous reading.
Do we want to go ahead and discuss these amendments? Is there some discussion before we decide whether to accept these amendments or not?
Public hearing.
Would we not, would we not need to have a motion in order to amend?
Yes.
Okay.
Also a public.
We need a motion to, and what I want to know is, do we do it in group or singularly?
Did we open a public hearing and ask for any testimony? We did. It's the only testimony.
It's not a public hearing.
Yeah, it is. It's listed as a public hearing on the agenda, isn't it?
Okay, so we need to open a public hearing on this one?
Yep.
We've had, all right, let's open a public hearing. Do we need swearing in and testimony and?
I'd ask if there, just if there's any other testimony besides the staff, and you can just declare the staff testimony to be a part of the record.
Okay. Is there any additional testimony than what we've already heard to have that as be a part of our, of our minutes? No?
Yes.
All right, let's have a motion then?
We have a, we have a speaker perhaps.
Oh, we do have a speaker. Pardon me, I didn't see you back there.
You should swear her in.
Okay.
My name is Dorothy Archer, 3640 Marshall Street, Wheat Ridge. I just want to know, how do all of these changes affect president, present business people and residents?
So you're really asking a question not?
Yes, I am. I, I, I need to know for myself, how do these affect the people that are already in businesses here and residents? This is quite an extension.
She wants to know how the changes will affect businesses that are presently established?
In most cases, the codes are applicable to new construction, so work that, new work that is done to existing structures is required to comply with the new codes. Structures that are existing that don't undergo change are not subject to any change based on these codes unless there's new work done or some sort of alteration done to that structure, and then these codes are what are, are applied to that work.
How soon does this go into effect?
December 1st is when we would actually begin enforcement.
So will these changes always go, already go into obligations to the people who have already gotten licenses for new businesses within Wheat Ridge? We have people going in on 38th Avenue. Are you going to present all of this to them before they actually have opened their business?
We, we have presented to contractors last year the intent to move to these codes. Many other jurisdictions have already moved to the 2012 codes, and quite honestly, many of the applications that we receive or contact with design professionals have been requests, or they have requested that they could design under these codes because they're already using these codes in other jurisdictions, and they asked quite frequently if we could accept plans or other designs under these codes. So, I don't anticipate there being a large effect to those people, and we have announced this publicly, and we would also have a grace period in which we would allow design and submission under both the 2006 and the 2012 codes. And there's not many significant changes between the two, quite honestly.
Thank you. I'm just curious, because the city of Wheat Ridge has a reputation for not being the easiest city in the world to deal with when it comes to building. Thank you.
I'm sorry to hear you say that. Any other public comment? I believe then a motion is ordered on these amendments, and then we can discuss the amendments, and I'm going to close the public hearing.
Okay, Madam Mayor, I'm going to move to approve Council Bill Number 13-2014, order it published, and that it become effective 15 days after final publication with the following amendments. Amendment number one, add a new Section 17 to the ordinance that reads, quote, "Notwithstanding any other provisions of this ordinance or the codes adopted herein to the contrary, each medical marijuana establishment and retail marijuana establishment existing within the city as of the effective date of this ordinance shall comply with Section 502.20 of the International Mechanical Code as adopted and amended by Section 3 of this ordinance prior to May 1, 2015." Amendment number two, and this was provided in, as a handout to you.
Right.
Which, which amends section, sections of the building code, the mechanical code, the energy conservation code, and the residential code, and there are different references for each of those sections, but each one would be amended to delete the first sentence. Now, amend Section 107.1 of the building code to delete the first sentence and replace it with, "Construction documents, statement of special inspections, and other data shall be submitted in two sets with each application for permit. The building official may allow additional sets to be submitted to allow for concurrent review to decrease the review time for applicants who wish to submit the additional documents." This, this language, this change would also amend Section 106.3.1 of the mechanical code, amend Section C103.1 of the energy conservation code, and amend Section R106.1 of the residential code for one and two-family dwellings. Amendment number three, amend Section 507.5.1 of the international fire code to add the following words at the beginning of the first sentence, "A fire hydrant shall be required." And a fourth amendment, to amend Section 1 of the ordinance to provide that the following amendments to the 2012 International Building Code read as follows, quote, "307.5, high-hazard group H3, add the following used to this section. Occupancies involved in the water-based and non-combustible solvent-based extraction of hash oil. All other occupancies involving the extraction of hash oil are not permitted. 307.5.1, extraction of, extraction of hash oil, add the following section. 307.5.1, extraction of hash oil. Occupancies involve, involving the water-based and non-combustible solvent-based extraction of hash oil shall be classified as H3 occupancies and shall comply with all the requirements of this code and reference codes for such occupancy classification. All other occupancies involving the extraction of hash oil are not permitted."
Second.
That was fast. All right, we've had, this is on the, the motion as amended. Do we have some discussion on this? Further discussion? Mr. Urban?
I'm looking at that, what appeared to be amendment number three, but it may be out of order related to how you read it, but it's the Section 507.5.1 requiring the placement of a fire hydrant. What, what is that requirement about?
On page 37 of your, of your packet, when you go to Section 507.5.1, it currently reads where required. Where a portion of a facility or building hereafter constructed or moved into or within this jurisdiction is moved more than 300 feet from a hydrant on a fire apparatus access road as measured from an approved route around the exterior of the facility or building. What it doesn't provide is a subject for the sentence, and so the sentence would read, "A fire hydrant shall be required," and then continue on with where it's required. It's a grammatical.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Giattulio?
Yes, when we had the first reading on this, or the study session, we had talked about including fines as an appeal process. Do you know where that's listed in the, in this new code? I can't seem to find it, but I made me missing it. We were going to allow residents and business owners to appeal decisions and including fines if they were fined by the building official or the code official?
Yes. At the first reading, it was asked that the phrase "including fines" be added to each of the Board of Appeals sections of each of the codes, and that should be in your packet. It should, it should say that, let me find, an application for appeal shall be based on the claim that the true intent of this code or the rules legally adopted thereunder "including fines" have been incorrectly interpreted, the provisions of the code do not fully apply, et cetera, et cetera. And that's in every one of the Means of Appeal section. It does have that phrase, "including fines."
Okay, because the section that I was looking for, if you put them in all, is Section 108.1, is this Board of Appeals established, appeals and decisions and determinations? Does that need the same "including fines"?
It's in that paragraph as well, Mayor, or excuse me, Mr. Giattulio. Old habits. So in the, in the, towards the end of that, that paragraph, it also says "including fines." We're on page six on Section 113, Board of Appeals.
That was on page 35 from when I was looking at. Unless this is a different Board of Appeals that we're talking about, page 35, 108.1?
So that is a different Board of Appeals. That section is the fire code.
Okay.
And, and so that's the only Board of Appeals section within the code that you won't find amended to "including fines" because those amendments were put together by the, jointly by the fire department.
I did read this. A thousand pages of it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions or discussion?
Madam Mayor, I have a procedural question. Councilmember Starker, you handed me your amendments, and this, the single sheet from staff with the motions, the first bullet is add a new Section 17, and you read that. And then, am I correct that you went to your amendments and you read the first one? Is that correct? And then, you, but you only read the first amendment on page one, and you read amendment number three on page two, and then you went to the single sheet and read amend Section 1 of the ordinance, 2012, blah, 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 on following.
As amendment number four.
Okay. Okay.
You're absolutely correct.
I hope you were listening, Mr. Dahl. Well, and then the second question, the amendment, the amend Section 106 and C103 and R106, you're not doing those?
Those are all under amendment number two.
Okay. So, now, my question, Mr. Dahl, is there's, there's all this rule and procedure about adopting codes by reference and so on and so forth. How should this, should the text of these amendments be memorialized?
Well, we'll, we'll provide for a clean version of the ordinance with these amendments to be produced, and it'll get signed by the mayor and you, and then we're done.
Okay. But should I copy all of the text into the minutes? Or, or the, when we do the codes, you, you just do them by reference? You don't read the whole code?
You don't have to copy them all into the, into the minutes. You, you can indicate that there was an amendment by Councilmember Starker amending the following sections.
Okay.
And.
And that will be adequate to?
Be adequate, sure. Because the real record of what happens is the ordinance as amended and assigned.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, moving back, we've had, on the motion, we've had a motion first and second. We've had discussion. Is it time to vote? Any other questions or discussion? Nope? Please pull the console.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. We're going to move on to item number four, another resolution. This is also a public hearing. Genevieve Wooden, would you read the number, the item, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a resolution number 54-2014, a resolution establishing a street width for Tabor Street from 49th Avenue to Ridge Road. At issue, the city of Wheat Ridge, a Gold Line partner, was selected to receive federal funding for access and safety improvements to Tabor Street from the I-70 Frontage Road North to Ridge Road through the Regional Transportation District and the Denver Regional Council of Governments Transportation Improvement Program. The funding facilitates a project to widen and improve Tabor Street to improve, to provide improved vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian access to the commuter rail station at Ward Road. The city is well underway with the design work, and as part of the implementation process, a street width designation is required in accordance with the provisions in the city charter. Construction is expected to commence in 2015 with completion prior to opening the Wheat Ridge Gold Line Ward Station in 2016.
This is once again a public hearing. Do I have staff or people who will be speaking that I need to swear in? Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth as you know it? If so, answer "I do." Thank you. And did you want to go ahead and give us a staff report?
Thank you, Your Honor, members of the council. Tonight, you have in front of you a resolution establishing a street width for Tabor Street from 49th. happen in, uh, to open in 2016. Uh, our intent is to reconstruct Tabor Street between, uh, basically the forty, uh, north, I-70 North frontage road and Ridge Road. Uh, the street width designation before you tonight is from Forty-Ninth Avenue to Ridge Road, uh, which currently is a rural section varying in width from, uh, uh, twenty-five to thirty, thirty-four feet. Uh, being proposed, uh, is a multimodal type of, uh, street that'll accommodate all modes of transportation, including, uh, pedestrians, sidewalks, uh, street section of forty-one feet in width that'll provide for, uh, two travel lanes, ten feet in width, eleven-foot, uh, center turn lane, and, uh, five-foot lanes for bicycle lanes, which comes out to forty-one feet. Uh, prior actions by the city council were, uh, back in March, an IGA was approved with RTD to, uh, basically divide responsibilities amongst RTD and the city in moving ahead with the project, including the funding. Um, back in August, the city, the council approved a resolution, um, amending the budget so, uh, to begin the right-of-way acquisition process. And more recently, on August twenty-seventh, a neighborhood informational meeting was held to, uh, discuss the project with, uh, adjoining property owners and residents. Also have Mark Westburg, the project engineer, in attendance if there are technical questions regarding the, uh, design of the street itself, which, uh, we hope to, um, pending the outcome of this item, uh, start putting, working on the design plans, construction plans right away so that we can, uh, get going on construction in 2015 and have it ready, uh, prior to the 2016 opening of the Gold Line Station.
Any further staff reports or, no, you'd have to swear in. Are there questions of staff? Mr. Starker?
Mr. Westburg, I think you're probably going to be my, my man on this one. Uh, we had a, we had in our sheet, uh, attachment number two...
Needs to be sworn in.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, and I'll swear him in before he replies. Or you want to go ahead? You swear to tell the truth in this matter?
I do.
I do, thank you.
Thank you. We have attachment number two, which is sort of the, the plan, if you will, and, and it looks like we've got four sections. Is it, is it the, are we going to use all four of those sections in the roadway?
Yeah, we're doing, we're doing four different things, and the, the two southern sections, we're, we're just restriping the road. Um, we've got some varying widths and things that we're doing down there, and the northern two sections, we're actually widening the road. Um, in, in that sort of, the, the northernmost section, we're getting sidewalks on both sides. The next section down, we're not putting sidewalks on the west side because there's that big drop-off to the businesses down below, and we were concerned about getting in that slope, and also there's just nowhere to walk to on that side. So, all the walking destinations are on the east side, so we're not putting sidewalk on the west side in that section. That's why it changes on the way, all the way down through there.
So, so the road width designation is really just north of thirty, north of Forty-Ninth Avenue?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Motion is in order?
I move to approve resolution number fifty-four dash twenty-fourteen, a resolution establishing a street width for Tabor Street from Forty-Ninth Avenue to Ridge Road in accordance with attachment number two.
Second?
Seconded by Ms. Langworthy. I need to close the public hearing. Please pull the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Item number five, Council Bill fourteen dash two zero one four.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council Bill number fourteen dash two zero one four, an ordinance imposing a temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of applications and requests for a permit, license, land use approval, or other approval for any medical marijuana establishment or retail marijuana establishment. At issue, a temporary moratorium on the submission, acceptance, processing, and approval of applications related to marijuana businesses, both medical and retail, is currently in place in the city. The current moratorium was adopted to maintain the status quo of current marijuana-related businesses within the city while the city council reviews, evaluates, and amends, if desired, the city's regulations concerning marijuana-related businesses. The city council is in the midst of conducting this review and evaluation, which is unlikely to conclude prior to the expiration of the current moratorium on November, November seventeenth, 2014. This ordinance adopts a ninety-day moratorium that commences simultaneously with the expiration of the current moratorium.
Second?
Is a motion in order?
A motion is not ordered. I move to approve Council Bill number fourteen dash twenty-fourteen on first reading, order it published, public hearing set for Monday, October twenty-seventh, 2014, at seven PM in the city council chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Now, may I have a second?
Second.
Is there council discussion? Mr. DiTullio?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to offer up a, a small amendment on this, and here's, here's why. Um, a couple of things. The current moratorium expires November seventeenth, as was mentioned in the motion, and this one's going to go out ninety days, and then the moratorium out ninety days, it just goes away. There's no public notification. So, what I'd like to do is make an amendment that will, um, not expire on ninety days, but it'll actually expire only when council has another public hearing on a first and second reading, so that'll give us more time to look at this entire issue through February if needed. The second thing would be is that, uh, if we have to, we take off the moratorium, council will have to do a first and second reading, because some of the things I've heard from citizens and concerned residents is that the way this is worded right now, the moratorium will come off in ninety days and it's done, and then nobody could possibly know. So, this amendment, I'll read it real, real quick here, uh, will allow us to, um, go past ninety days if council wants to, and then it would require a first and second reading to lift the moratorium in the future, so there'd be public notice. So, let me just read it, and then hopefully somebody will second it. If they don't, then maybe know what that means. So, um, I move to amend section three of the above referenced council bill as follows. Section three, duration. The moratorium imposed by this ordinance shall commence on November seventeenth, 2014, and shall expire, strike on the ninety-first day thereafter, insert upon further formal action by the council concerning the same. So what that's basically doing is allowing us to pass another ordinance to bring it back, or to actually lift the ordinance, lift the moratorium in the future.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Urban has seconded. Is there some discussion?
I have a question. I mean, I, I appreciate the, the amendment, but my understanding of a moratorium, especially since this one being, um, moved for today is not an emergency one, um, we can extend this moratorium if at some point before the ninety days expires, should we so choose, correct? I mean, nothing keeps us from extending this one.
No, not at all. You'd need to do it by ordinance, of course, and so you'd, you'd have to do what you're doing here, which is a first and second reading, and councils will, where the fact that emergency ordinances, which we had for the first one, can't later be adopted as a regular, and so we're doing a regular. You'd need to do the same thing, and so you'd need to start that soon enough before November seventeen that you'd be able to accomplish it, just as you're doing this soon enough before whenever the expiration of the current one is.
And when we first had the discussion about medical marijuana, um, some time ago, we had several extensions of our moratorium due to the fact that we weren't, you know, the state wasn't quite ready for it, and we had agreed to those extensions in a timely manner, and I don't believe we had any lapses in any of those extensions. Correct?
That's correct. It was continuous.
Mr. DiTullio?
Well, I agree with Councilmember Langworthy. What I'm trying to avoid is keep having first and second readings, first and second readings to extend, to extend, to extend. But this, what this actually does, it gives us more than ninety days if we need it, and then when the public wants to be notified that we're going to actually lift it, we'll have to have a first and second reading. So, we're not having this first and second reading every ninety days, and we have to back it up and figure out, oh, we need to do it a month from now, and this way it's, it's a clean issue where you have it one time. We'll continue the moratorium until it's done, and then we can lift it by first and second reading, and the public will be notified rather than extending, extending, extending. And, um, this doesn't affect any of the current businesses, because the six that are out there are operating under the moratorium, and they're not affected by this like they are not affected now. So that's why I offered up the amendment to sort of quell the fears that somehow we're going to lift this moratorium and no one's going to know about it, or we're going to get an application for a certain location, and that's why I brought it up.
Further discussion?
Does it have to be limited to ninety days? I mean, can we not amend the, the original moratorium to a longer period than ninety days? I, I, I just assume if you don't think we can get it done in ninety days, extend the, amend this original one to be a longer period, and then that way people can have, have a definite expectation of an end time from us than to, to indefinitely, I mean, I understand and I appreciate, I mean, I want a full discussion on this issue. That is not at, at the heart of it, but I remember we had, um, moratoriums for, for extended periods, I mean, like, year or something, to give us the time to work on, uh, medical marijuana. I just assume make a, a longer period and get the work done sooner than to have people wonder how long it's going to take us to get it done. I, I, I may be the only one, and that's fine, but that's, I would, I would rather propose a hundred-and-twenty-day moratorium, because I think we could get the work done in that time.
Okay. Any other comments? Mr. Starker?
I, I, I think it would, I think it would behoove us to, uh, to stay with ninety days and keep moving through this issue. I think we have an engaged, uh, citizenry, we have an engaged issue, we need to, we need to keep the fire on this, we need to, uh, make the appropriate, uh, decisions that are right for our city, and I don't think we should, uh, push this out. I think we ought to keep moving forward on it, so I will, um, not, not be supporting Mr. DiTullio's amendment.
Mr. Pond?
I was waiting. I also appreciate, I appreciate the logic, um, but I also won't, uh, be supporting, uh, the amendment, I think based, um, in part on what Councilwoman Langworthy has put forward in terms of, I thi, and what Mr. Starker, Councilman Starker's put forward, which is is I do think we have an ability to move forward and continue to keep, uh, pace and keep the conversation going, uh, as we have scheduled meetings on this, and, um, and I think if, uh, for some reason, we do need additional time, which I, I think, um, it would be fair for us then at that time to extend it as we have in the past.
I think it's time for the vote on the amendment. Please, pull the council.
Motion fails two to six with Councilmembers Wooden, Langworthy, Fitzgerald, Pond, Davis, and Starker voting no.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that would be strike ninety days and make it a hundred-and-twenty days.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Starker?
Mr. Urban.
Mr. Urban, excuse me? Discussion on the second amendment, on the additional amendment to make it a hundred-and-twenty days instead of ninety days. Ms. Davis?
So, Mr. DiTullio, you don't think that we could meet the, the timeline? I mean, I know we're, we're trying to work on it and, and...
Well, I, I, my concern is that we're going to get through the, this year with less meetings because of the holidays. We're going to hit January, we're going to have stuff going on, and then February comes up, and then we're going to have to pass another ordinance to extend it, and there's been some discussion and questions about the special use permit, which I support in theory, but I know Mr. Pond and Mr. Fitzgerald were talking to staff about, so I just want to be able to vet the special use process, we go that route, or any other issues. So I think a hundred-and-twenty days buys us that February, what, March, April, May, so in the springtime, we get past the holidays, past all the issues going on, and get through the special use permit process to discuss. The current businesses that are out there are not going to be affected like they aren't now. That's all I'm, that's all I'm looking for. This wasn't actually to, this wasn't for the businesses, this was for us, that we're not passing first and second readings over and over again and extending. I still think that, my concern is, is that a hundred-and-twenty days, it's going to expire, and the public won't necessarily know, because the way it's written right now, it's just going to expire, we won't have to pass an ordinance on first and second reading, but I'm willing to compromise at the hundred-and-twenty days, just people will be aware of it, and the audience and council, so...
Ms. Langworthy?
I would support that. I think, though, that, I mean, for us, I think we need to keep in our back of our mind that ninety days is, is our target goal. A hundred-and-twenty is just kind of that little buffer in case some, some snag comes up, but I, I just as soon get this taken care of in ninety days and be done with it, move on to other matters. Um, I feel very strongly about this matter, but, um, about the marijuana issue, but I really want to see us come to some conclusion, so our residents can feel like it's been done, it's been put to rest. So, I, I aim for ninety days. If a hundred, if, if a hundred-and-twenty gives us a little buffer, then I'm not opposed to a little buffer.
Ms. Wooden?
I would support the ninety-day moratorium and then continuing it as we need it. If we have to do resolutions, we have to do resolutions. That's the procedures that are in place, and that's the procedures we can use, and I guarantee the public will know when these resolutions are coming near, there's no doubt about that. So I'm not worried about something happening and them not knowing about it.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to offer that, um, if you, if there's an outside chance that you're not going to finish in ninety days, and I understand that's what you want to do, um, by extending it to a hundred-and-twenty days, it would, it would, um, in the event that there, you don't finish in, exactly in ninety days, it would save a lot of staff time and also the expense of further publications if, if you had those extra days established now rather than having to add them on later, as far as costs for publications and staff time to redo that.
All right, is there any further discussion? Mr. DiTullio?
Well, that's the other thing I wanted to mention to Ms. Wooden, is that every time we have to go first and second reading, that has to be published, and that costs us money, so if we just extend it out to a hundred-and-twenty days now, it costs the city taxpayers money. If we extend a hundred-and-twenty days now and we modify it on first reading, it'll get published with the one-twenty, we don't have to republish it later, and that gives us a hundred-and-twenty days through May, so we save us some taxpayer money, and this crowd will know that we're looking at May now versus February. So I'm trying to save us some funds in the future also.
Are we ready to vote, or do we need more discussion on this?
Madam, Madam Mayor?
Mr. Starker?
If I, if this is going to take effect in, in November seventeenth, then, when I counted out, it's not May, is it? It's December, January, February, March?
No, it's, it's, it's going to start at seventeen and go to a hundred-and-twenty days.
Right, so that's four months?
Hundred-and-twenty is four months.
Four months. So, so we're talking about, we're talking about coming to a decision by March the seventeenth of 2015. That's a hundred-and-twenty days. Otherwise, we're talking about coming to a decision on or about February seventeenth of 2015, just, just so we've got our calendar and months clear.
Okay, the amendment we're looking at right now is for a hundred-and-twenty days, which would be the final day of March seventeenth, or right around that day. Is that correct? Okay, can we have a vote on that? Are we ready for the vote? We are. Please vote.
Motion carries five to three with Councilmembers Wooden, Fitzgerald, and Pond voting no. Okay, so the motion is passed for a hundred-and-twenty days? We can move on to item number six, is that correct? Everybody? Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, we did, that was the amendment. Exactly right, we do need to pass the motion, which is now, has an amendment on it, so I need a motion to pass, oh...
No, actually, the motion's pending. You just amended it with the time.
We just amended it.
So now you vote on the main motion, which is to adopt the ordinance.
The motion is amended. Okay, please pull the council on that one.
Motion carries eight zero.
Now we're ready to move on to item number six.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, motion to accept Kipling Street right-of-way and temporary construction easements from adjacent property owners along project segment. At issue, the city was awarded federal funding for a multi-use trail project on Kipling Street from Thirty-second Avenue to Forty-fourth Avenue through the Denver Regional Council of Governments, Dr. Cog, Transportation Improvement Program, TIP. In March 2011, the project involves the construction of a trail to accommodate pedestrians and bicyclists. Construction plans have essentially been completed and are awaiting approval for CDOT and FHWA. The right-of-way acquisition is also essentially complete with the assistance of the city's consultant, Bohannon Houston. A substantial number of right-of-way parcels and temporary construction easements have been acquired through the right-of-way property acquisition process. The Kipling Street Trail construction requires utilization of street right-of-way and easements obtained from various property owners along the property segment. Property owners have con-
Property owners have conveyed to the city the necessary right-of-way by warranty deed and have provided temporary construction easements where needed. Motion in order?
I don't think we have any report on this, do we? Nope. Motion is in order?
I move to accept the Kipling Street right-of-way and temporary construction easements from adjacent property owners along the project segment.
Second.
Moved in second, is there any discussion?
Was that Mr. Pond? Fitzgerald?
Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Once again, Ms. Langworthy?
A motion to accept Kipling Street and Forty-ninth Avenue right-of-way along natural grocers frontage. At issue, due to the improvements proposed for the Kipling Street and West Forty-ninth Avenue intersection associated with the natural grocers development, additional right-of-way is needed along both frontages of the parcel located at the northeast corner of this intersection. The dedication will allow for the proposed improvements to lie within the public right-of-way and be maintained by the city. Is a motion in order?
I believe it is, unless we have some other, do we have any reports on that one? No? Please, motion is in order?
I move to approve the right-of-way dedication as described in the attached deed and legal description.
Second? Please poll the council unless there's discussion. Nope, looks like it.
Motion carries eight zero.
That concludes our business meeting, may we move on to City Managers Matters?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind the public, give a plug for our Wheat Ridge Optimus Club, we have an Optimus Pancake Breakfast this Thursday evening from Pancake Supper, sorry, if you want to, I eat breakfast in the evening, Ms. Langworthy. Thursday, this Thursday, five to eight p.m. at the Wheat Ridge High School, the proceeds from the, this event go to serve our youth in our community, and if anybody needs tickets, I do have tickets, because I'm in competition with Ms. Langworthy to sell the most.
Now I know why you twisted my arm. City Attorney's Matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Elected officials, Mr. Pond, let's start with you, your right and my left.
Thank you. Before I start, I want to thank everyone who's come and talked about the marijuana issues. Jennifer, Mary, Becky, Veronica, Patty tonight came, and obviously, we've had a lot of people over the last few weeks. I want to, once for the chair, I want to thank all of council, and I think reassure everyone that council cares about this topic. I want to especially thank Genevieve Wooden, who's been obviously passionate and has come to this issue with her intelligence and her commitment to do the right work. I want to also thank Tim Fitzgerald, who's been my partner in District Three as we've dealt with some of the District Three specific issues, and assure the people in District Three that we have been listening, and, and that this is a complicated and difficult issue, and that we are all taking it seriously. And I think as was previously noted in the, in the item number five, we've got a lot of work ahead of us, and, and we do want to get through it deliberately, and to that extent, I would, and based on the public input presented at City Council, citywide constituent communication and correspondence and additional research performed and/or presented by city council members and citizens, I want to present the following motion. I move to direct staff and the city attorney to draft an ordinance affecting the Code of Laws consisting of the following ten policy actions. One, cap the number of medical marijuana centers, retail stores, or co-located stores citywide at five. Two, cap the number of marijuana-infused product manufacturers citywide at three. Number three, add a thousand-foot separation from Wheat Ridge Parks and Recreation Facilities for medical marijuana centers and retail marijuana stores. Four, limit medical marijuana centers and retail marijuana stores grow operations to five thousand square feet. Five, create additional sign restrictions for medical marijuana centers and retail marijuana stores. Six, establish additional packaging restrictions for medical, for, excuse me, for marijuana-infused products sold at medical marijuana centers and retail marijuana stores. Seven, make medical marijuana centers and retail marijuana stores special uses in C-one zone districts. Eight, make all medical, current medical marijuana centers and retail marijuana stores legal non-conforming special uses. Nine, change the term of a medical marijuana center and retail marijuana store special use permit expiration from one year to six months. And ten, require that any new responsible party for medical marijuana centers and retail marijuana stores will be subject to administrative review and additional use conditions. And present the staff analysis and draft ordinance at the November seventeenth study session for review and discussion.
Okay. That was a motion.
Second?
Yeah, yeah, wait, give me a second, I have a second for Mr. Fitzgerald, and now let's discuss this.
I'd just like to say that if, if anyone's listening and they're looking at these first numbers, I want to clarify with Patrick that when it says five for retail, and then it says marijuana-infused product manufacturers at three, so a few of those three are part of the five, correct?
Correct, there's, there's two of the five that include a MIP as part of their operations, and then there's a pending third MIP, which would be a standalone at this point.
Right. So what this is saying is that we are capping the total number of establishments as to what they are right now, and that's the cap and the limit, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and so, no new licenses would be permitted under this proposal?
As long as these five and three respectively stay in business, if, if there were changes, and one went out of business, or, there potentially could be a new application.
Correct, and, and this is a very detailed proposal, and we'll be discussing it at the November seventeenth study session. I thank Mr. Pond for all of the research and he has done regarding our special use permits, and what, reviewing what the public has asked for, and that would include the signage, that would include the, the MIP products packaging, and I, I do support this, we will be discussing it at the September seventeenth study session, or, I'm sorry, November seventeenth study session, in more detail, so that we'll have time to discuss it as a council.
Is there other discussion? Than as a consensus?
Who was the second, was there a second?
There's no consensus, this is actually a motion, right?
You've got a motion on the table, so you'll need to vote on it.
If there was any other discussion, please?
Well, I guess, you know, my whole point of trying to get the, the moratorium extended out was, so we could look at all this, so now we're going to cram this in all on November seventeenth, try to rush through this to get, within now a hundred-and-twenty days, I mean, I don't know why this couldn't have been brought up at a study session and these discussed later, I mean, I don't know, it just seems like it's kind of a gotcha, I mean, I, I don't have any problem with most of these, but why, why the big fight about extending the moratorium if we're going to look at ten different changes to the code, and all of a sudden now, we're going to, we're going to jam it in on the seventeenth? That doesn't make any sense, I mean, that's just, that's just rushing it and poor public policy to try to get this all done on one night, in my opinion. I mean, I'll back the motion, because I believe it's the right thing to do, but I, I don't understand why a motion I make to extend this out longer, so we can really do all this in a timely manner, is shot down, or potentially shot down, and now we're going to jam everything in a November seventeenth study session, so. Just think we have to think about what we're doing.
I don't think the intent is to jam anything in, I think the intent is to, to work diligently, much like Councilmember Starker indicated. I don't think there's any final decisions, perhaps that'll be made on the seventeenth, that'll be when we look at the work and try to identify whether or not these ten things can formulate good policy, and I assume that there's going to be continuing work after that point, and continuing, and continuing public input, and that we will use, as Councilmember Langworthy suggested, our ninety days, but now we have thirty extra in case we need it.
So this doesn't affect the current businesses that are out there right now? How about the ones that are being worked on, the MIPS? Is there any, is any business affected by this at all, for the future?
Well, potentially, I mean, based on what council's final decisions are, but, well, I mean, if you look at some of the proposed policy questions, I think there could be some impact, but I think that has to be discussed, and, and we'll look into that to see what those impacts are and bring that back to council.
The motion is to direct staff to create the ordinance.
Yeah, and we'll have to, obviously have to review each one of these and, and see what impacts there are, Mr. DiTullio, and we'll definitely bring those forward.
Mr. Starker was next.
I think we've got a good direction going here, I think we're a little bit, when I, when I read it, it looks to me like we might be a little bit premature to direct staff to draft an ordinance. I certainly would be in favor of having staff do research on all of these and bring us back the potential implications. I, for one, don't think that we really need an ordinance drafted on the seventeenth for these, and I have one other, one other thing, just as a, on bullet point number six, establish additional packaging restrictions, I don't know why we don't include marijuana and medically-infused marijuana products, so that we might be able to, to get some tamper-evident packaging in the marijuana product itself. So, you know, that's, that's a little thing, but I, I support this, I think that we should maybe not move into drafting language, I don't, you know, I, I'm not sure that I'm ready to tell Mr. Dahl to go ahead and, and ramp up the legal experts in order to draft the language on this for the seventeenth, when we really haven't had a chance to explore these issues, so I would offer an amendment to your, to your motion that we direct staff and the city attorney to, to explore these, but not draft an ordinance at this time.
Second?
Okay, an amendment has been to not direct staff, but to explore these options, and we have a second of that, we have a discussion on that amendment.
So you're suggesting that we look at these items, have staff bring information back to us, discuss it at study session, and then possibly at that point, give more direction on establishing the ordinance?
That would be my, that would be my path, path to ordinance, if you will.
That sound, looks as agreeable? Any other discussion? All right, Mr. Pond?
For clarification, I will strike that your amendment, I assume, will strike the words "draft an ordinance affecting" and in substitute "explore the Code of Laws," and strike and draft ordinance at the bottom, and just, just leaving staff analysis.
That's correct.
Are we ready to vote on that amendment?
That amendment, yeah.
We've got a second on it, don't we?
Yeah, I second it. I just want to heard.
Oh, that's right. Did you get that?
I did.
Please vote.
Motion carries eight zero.
Do we need to go back to the original motion?
Further discussion?
Mr. Urban?
Thank you. As a part of this analysis, I'd like to understand better how existing state laws reflect some of these elements as well, so that we're not duplicating some of those, or where necessary, we're enhancing those, but specifically related to additional packaging restrictions, I wouldn't suggest the city of Wheat Ridge is the expert on packaging, so I'd want to make sure we're consistent with what the state's doing, and enhance those where we need to, but make sure that we're not duplicating unnecessarily where we can leave it to the state, but I want to make sure that if we can enhance them, we will, but just kind of have that intersection available for analysis to understand what the state is doing, where we don't have to burden ourselves with some of that requirements.
We'd make that a part of our staff analysis, I think we absolutely should, that's the starting point for the staff analysis, would be the state regs on those subjects, and I think it's a point well taken.
I believe the state is doing some pretty serious looking at packaging at this point.
Correct.
All right, are we ready? Okay.
I just wanted to make another comment, I also do not feel that we're jamming this in for the seventeenth, that we are taking the time to make a discussion, to look at these issues, to ask staff to come back with some information for us, I don't want to make a hasty decision, I want us to be able to make an informed, intelligent decision, and considering that we could keep extending the moratorium as long as council wished, I do believe this is the right course of action to take, to, to look at this, do a study session, if we need more time for a moratorium, we can also enact it at that time, so.
Mr. DiTullio, actually, we don't have a motion on this, we're having discussion without.
Yeah, we do, we have Mr. Pond's motion, he's, so I'll agree with him, I'll vote for the motion as amended, because now I think, if we were going to have an ordinance on the seventeenth, I really feel that was rushing the issue and really not giving it the full attention, so now that we're going to have staff explore these options and bring it back like Mr. Starker suggested, I'll support the motion as amended.
Okay. We ready for the, the actual vote of the council, please?
Motion carries eight zero.
The motion is passed. I want to congratulate the staff, each, excuse me, the council members, each and every one of them has been working with the, with the citizens out there, they're taking it very seriously, they're moving forward, I'm, I'm just very proud of each and every one of them for the kind of work they're doing, this is serious business, and they're, they're really putting their ears and, and heart to it, so. All right, let's move on to elected officials' matters, going forward, Mr. Fitzgerald, I started to my left. Ms. Langworthy?
I, I don't think that, at this point, I'd like to just remind those that are on the boards and commissions, that our, our dinner is Wednesday night, five p.m. for cocktails and, and socialization, and six p.m. for the awards, so if you're on one of our boards or commissions, please join us at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center.
Nothing. Ms. Davis?
I just want to, oops, thank you, I, I'd want to thank the folks for coming out and, and speaking tonight, I think it's good to have dialogue and provide information, and I think that's all.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I'd like to give a huge thanks out to all the volunteers on the boards and commissions in the city of Wheat Ridge, and how much time and effort they spend on each of those boards and commissions, and I'm thankful to have an opportunity to provide an appreciation dinner for them this coming week, and just wanted to say thank you to all those who volunteered to make the city a great place to be, thank you.
Mr. Starker?
I'd just like to say that if you haven't been aware, that there's an election about to happen on November fourth, it's, it's one of the greatest rights that we have as citizens, and I hope everyone will take the opportunity to register to vote and cast your vote for the, for the, for the candidates and ballot measures that you want to, because this is the way that you influence public policy. Thank you.
And Mr. DiTullio?
Thank you, I also want to remind everybody that your ballots will be out this week in your mail, it's mail-in ballot, Wheat Ridge has issues on the ballot, plus state and other local issues on the ballot, so please vote, one way or the other, it's, it's execute your constitutional right to vote, and have a good week.
Okay, my job is to close the meeting, which I'm doing, meeting is adjourned.
Madam Mayor?
Oh, I always miss the clerk.
I wanted to say that the ballots are going to be mailed out tomorrow through Friday, and if you don't get a, it, it could be Friday that your ballot actually gets mailed out, and so, if you don't have it by Friday, don't panic, I would say, if another week goes by and you don't have a ballot, then you want to call the county and see what the problem is, and they'll tell you what to do about it. We're going to be having, on Election Day, an actual polling place here, that people can come bring their ballots, they can also register that day, and they will print you a ballot. We conducted the test last Thursday out at the county, and tested the, the big machines, and everything came out fine for counting and so on, and it's, it's, it's a long day, we hand tally things, and then send the same ballots through the machines. We hand tally things and then send the same ballots through the machines to see if they're, if the hand tally matches what the machine is doing, and everything came out great. We also did the visually impaired ballots, that all came out good, so the machines are ready to go. Also wanted to remind people with the ballot issues that signs are not supposed to be on public right-of-way, and we've had a couple calls, and I have to turn those into code enforcement, so you might save yourself some headaches if you just examine where your signs are. Generally speaking, telephone pole lines are the right-of-way, that's kind of a rule of thumb, but, and then also, on residential property, the sign limit is eight square feet, and on commercial property, the sign limit is sixteen square feet. And if you have, as, they mentioned the boards and commissions dinner, because I had to get some council RSVPs tonight, board and commission members, if you have not RSVP'd, please do call us tomorrow so that we can accommodate that with the caterer, and Mr. Dahl, you're certainly invited to come.
I've already reserved my spot.
Okay, good. That's all, thank you.
I have a question, I have a question for Clerk Schaper.
Yep.
You spoke about the sign ordinance regarding political signs, I thought it was eight square feet for all political signs, regardless of commercial or residential.
It's eight, eight square feet for political signs, eight square feet on residentially-zoned property, and sixteen square feet on commercially-zoned property. And that is...
That is correct.
That's in chapter twenty-six.
Thank you for the info.
A couple of different charts.
Okay, anybody else? The meeting is closed.